I'd like to call the regular at a school board meeting, Hibbing Public Schools, ISD 711. Order it's June 21st, 2023 at 3:30 PM daylight saving time in the boardroom. I'd like to welcome everybody here. With that, move item two, pledge allegiance. Do you stand if you wish?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which your stance on the nation, on your principle with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to number three, motion to approve the agenda.
Hold.
Support.
Move by Director Polter, support by Director LaBardi, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. With that, we'll move to item four, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Hold.
Support.
Move by Director Polter, supported by Director Egan, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. With that, we'll move to item five, public comment. I didn't see anything there. None. With that, we'll move to item six, Superintendent Rick isn't here today, so I'll take over that for him. Move item eight, motion to accept the resignation of Isabel Pearson, JV girls soccer coach, effective June 9th, 2023.
Hold.
Support.
Move by Director Polter, supported by Director McLaughlin, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. With that, we'll move to item B, motion to accept the resignation of Paul Blount, Best Student in Washington Elementary, effective June 30th, 2023.
Hold.
Support.
Move by Director Polter, supported by Director Egan, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. With that, we'll move to item C, motion to approve the hiring of Colleen McCormick as the junior varsity girls swimming and diving coach, effective August 14th, 2023.
Support.
Move by Director McLaughlin, support by Director LaBardi, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. With that, we'll move to item D, motion to approve the hiring of Savannah Piper as the head girls' soccer coach, effective August 14th, 2023.
Hold.
Support.
Move by Director Polter, supported by Director McLaughlin, excuse me, any discussion?
I guess I just liked it that Mr. Turner said, did they go through the interview process that we established this is the recommendation?
Thank you. Very good. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. With that, we'll move to item eight, administrative reports. Most of the directors, anything from the directors? Eric, oh, go ahead.
I don't know if it's on the agenda, but we had the first meeting with Chisen, them. It is get on here. So if we just want to kind of give a brief update, I.
You mean committee meeting?
The committee meeting, yes.
I think that now we're doing a discussion.
Oh.
Rick wanted to be part of that discussion.
Yeah, you can, you can, you want to.
No, we can do it at discussion time.
Well, Rick wanted to be a tool to discuss it.
Oh, okay.
Because we'll have a meeting, another meeting, and then bring up the date.
Okay.
But thank you for that.
July 12th.
Yeah. With Director McLaughlin's reporting to, we had a meeting with Chisen Board, and everything went very well. We discussed more of the stuff that we were going through before with our other meetings, separate meetings, and we're to have another joint meeting to summarize all this hopefully on July 12th. So then we'll have a better handle on what's going on.
That's actually right before next quarter.
Right. So we'll give an update then.
And is it fair to just share that the two superintendents are off having conversation, and they're going to come back to us also with additional information?
Yes, that's a good point. The two superintendents are going to get together and then bring it back to the groups. So then we're doing an update at that time. So we should have a lot of information. Okay, anything, administration?
So I was, I came today to just give you a quick update on our athletic training. We are still under contract until 2024, the end of 2024. But St. Luke's did approach me again. They want to come in and do our strength and conditioning and just making sure right now that we don't violate our contract with, why can't I think of?
Orthopedic Association.
Orthopedic, thank you. I just couldn't think of their name. So that does, yesterday I did football camp for three days, and yesterday I did over 22,000 steps, so my brain isn't working with my meat. So yeah, I'm a little sore today. I don't think I've ever done 22,000 steps. But anyway, I'm meeting, I was supposed to meet with a person from St. Luke's. They ended up having a family emergency, so we're going to plan a meeting next week and then make sure we can align it and we're not in breach of our contract with orthopedic associations. So, but if they come in and they do our strength and conditioning, they would come in and take over and give us some money towards our weight room to buy new weight equipment and then also design programs for our student athletes and then also have programs for our students from eating disorders to mental health things, so which would all be provided for free under the contract that we would have with them. So I'll have more information after I meet with Jake Disserhoff, the gentleman that says St. Luke's, and then I can bring that back to you. The other thing I wanted to touch base on, we had our golf scramble last Monday. God, the weeks are running together. We had 116 golfers. We had several businesses donate, and thank you, Mike, too, for donating the jacket. It was part of a raffle. But we have several businesses that donated, and after we get done paying all the bills, I think everything is in, we've made, we cleared $13,000. So, and that money will go directly to our students that are in need of anything that comes from like paying their feet, they can't pay their fees, they may need equipment or any kind of essentials that may fall under that. So that doesn't, none of that money goes towards salaries or paying coaches or advisors or anything like that. That's strictly for students, so.
I do see $13,000.
$13,000. So our hope is next year to get a little earlier start, and I'd like to see us make 20,000 to 25,000. And I think we can do that. I don't think the golf course could handle any more golfers, though. We would be there for eight hours golfing, but I think our number is right around 120 to 125 as far as golfers. But I think we could do a lot more with corporate sponsors and then whole sponsors, so.
I didn't golf at it, but I was there on the range while people were there, and I heard a lot of positive feedback from it, and that parking lot was full. So I mean, you guys really did have good participation, and you had a beautiful day for it, too.
Yeah, it was a really nice day, and I can't take all the credit. It was Becky Fensmacher, Gretchen Rusage, James Please, Chris Hansen. Jen Ford was the bulk of our committee. So my hope is more coaches will get involved. I was a little disappointed, and I want this to be on tape, that more coaches didn't get involved because, again, that money's going to go to their student athletes. So the other thing is, and I don't know if that was on the agenda, it looks like the locker, the locker room, the lockers are going to be moving forward for the, at Cheever Field, is it, yeah, Dr. Owens Field, Cheever Stadium, sorry. I have to remember that, too. But that looks like it's going to get moved, moving forward. The floor is going to be completed here sometime in July, when I was talking to Tyler, and then right after that, the lockers will be able to be put in place, so.
So can we back up to the contract that you were talking about for the athletic trainer? So St. Luke's is coming in and doing a proposal for this year for those additional services that you were talking about?
Yeah.
As long as we don't violate?
Yep.
Our O A contract.
Yes, and that's what I want to make sure, that's why I'm meeting with Jake, to make sure that we don't do any crossover and it doesn't affect anything with O A, so.
So our contract is going to expire on June 30th, 2024?
Yes.
With orthopedic. Whether St. Luke's and us enter this relationship now, are we putting our athletic training services out for bid for next year?
We will do that. That'll happen probably the first of the year, January of 2024. I'll, I'll put that out for bid, and then everybody will have an opportunity. So St. Luke's, this doesn't give them a leg up to be our athletic trader. It just gives them, gives our students an opportunity to have some more expertise with the weight training and some of the nutrition stuff.
And that's excellent. I just want to make sure that then next year we put it out for bid and open it up, whether it's Fairview or Essentia or St. Luke's, that they all have an opportunity, orthopedic associates, that they all have an opportunity to submit a proposal.
Because once that, once these go out, it seems like everybody wants to come in and be our provider, and I think we'll have opportunities to get some monies that will help us update some things, some facilities and different things, too.
And I just think they all support our schools and our programs in one way or another. So I just want to make sure that we're giving everybody an opportunity.
Yeah.
So we divide that, at this point, it's divided between the training contract and the strength and conditioning contract?
Well, see, in the.
But normally it's all together, isn't it? Or no?
Or? So the contract we have with O A doesn't have anything with strength and conditioning?
Oh, okay.
So.
So we're asking someone else for that part?
Yeah. So when that, so now, when we put it out for bid, that'll all be in there.
It'll all be together?
Yes.
Okay.
So that wasn't in there previously, so.
So this contract with St. Luke's for these supplemental services would only be for one year?
Yep. It would be just one academic year. We wouldn't go out any further than that.
Okay. But they actually promised us money for, even if we went with them, for this one year of strength and conditioning?
So that's what they said. So once I sit down and I talk to Jake and then he talks to his supervisor, I'll have more information for you.
Okay.
Does O A even offer those other services that St. Luke's is coming up for?
I don't think they do. So, but Essentia does, and Fairview has a component of that, so.
I mean, golf, if you had eight on each hole, it could go up to 144 before you could, of course, could accommodate.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay. So you could get a few more golfers, yeah.
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 I know that Hi-Fi Classic gets a lot, but is that two days? Is that why they can take so many?
No.
Hi-Fi Classic that they just had at the country club?
I think it's two days.
That was for each, okay. Because I was going to say they get like 200 or something like that. But that's two days, okay. We don't want to do two days.
Before you leave, I just want to shout out to all the athletes that participated last night in the downtown Howard Street.
Yes.
We had football, soccer, basketball, hockey, and they're all the student athletes that came down and took their time to help the kid and show the kids what to do. It was a nice, good time, good turnout.
I know that, they did that last year, too. That was a pretty turnout, so.
Yeah, it was great. My, my three daughters and all 10 of the kids were down there, and they said it was fantastic, and they said all these high school kids were volunteering, and it was just really fun. So, yeah, that's awesome.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm sorry, I do have a question, because you didn't go over the bandage.
Oh, yeah.
I guess I was just going to ask.
Oh, so we got over the, because this is, so we, we reached out to Pepsi and Coca-Cola. Pepsi was the only one that got back to us, and what we're looking at right now, this is a proposal that they would come in, they would provide us with the product, we would have our student senate, our student leadership group, they would fill the machines, and I probably would fill them, too, but we would make all the profit from it. So that would go, that would be able to go to activities, to student senate, just a bunch of things that we have going on for students during the day and after school. So it also would be up in the teacher's lounge, so.
Who do we use now?
Now is Sullivan's.
That's what I thought.
And then they, they are in transition, but this, this is just such a much better deal for us to be able to stock it ourselves. And then we would also be able to, and I haven't, I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but I, because I haven't met with the booster clubs yet, but we would also be able to provide all of the product right there to our booster clubs for their tournaments, for concession stands during the year, and it would help them make more money because we're getting it at a lower rate.
So would Sullivan's be given the opportunity to put a bid in to do this, or don't they want to anymore?
So Renee was working with Sullivan's, and I don't know if they want to.
Maybe they don't want to, maybe they can't feel like they can't compete a bit with Pepsi or whatever.
I don't know. So she was, she was working with them more, so I was just in the meetings with the gentleman.
And then Coca-Cola, have they bid, or they don't want to?
No, they didn't. I don't think they want to.
Oh, okay. What were you going to say, Mike?
Well, I'm just going to say Tom sold part of the business to Jesse Radica.
I know that.
I'm not sure he wants to be. What I'm concerned with is that little note at the bottom, that if we don't, if we don't use 1,200 cases, are we responsible to cover the difference? I've dealt with Coke and Pepsi and.
So that's, that's, that's on the, that's on the low end, because what we've sold out of here is almost double. And we wouldn't, we wouldn't, we would always stay on the low end, just so we wouldn't, and then he did pledge to us, if we didn't sell, we wouldn't be responsible for buying, buying the product. If we had, say, something happened and we weren't able to sell that much, we wouldn't be responsible to say we had to buy like 5,000 more cases, so. But I think with us selling it to our booster clubs and the concessions, we would be well over that, so.
And this is just drinks, right? I mean, this is just.
Yeah, and we wouldn't do the credit card reader, because again, that cuts into the profit, because you have to pay a percentage for it to go through credit card and then have Pepsi pay us the money. So we would only deal in cash.
So what if our booster club said, oh, we can get our stuff cheaper at Sam's Club, we want to do it all ourself? That's not.
I would, I would, they'd have that option.
Oh, they would have that option, okay.
Yeah, because if they want to hustle down to Sam's Club and haul it.
Buy it, haul it in.
Yeah.
Okay, so they would still have that option, but this would be a lot easier for them, right?
Yeah.
Because it would be delivered.
Yes.
Yeah.
It would be delivered and we, yeah.
Okay.
Less of liability through everyone's, it'd be a liability otherwise.
Or going to Sam's?
This is all covered, so.
Well, yeah, it's, it's nice, but I remember when I was involved with the booster club in a concession, we bought it at, you know, Sam's Club, and we hauled it in and we stocked it up, and we did it all. You know, we didn't have any, you know, like this, which this would make kind of nice.
Keith, so are there machines in the elementary school, say, teachers' lounges or stuff?
There are, I don't know how many are in other schools, but I know there are machines, but there would be certain drinks that wouldn't be sold, like in the Lincoln, the Washington, and the Greenhaven.
They would be, or?
They wouldn't be. Like, they, they wouldn't sell like bubblers and stuff, a lot of things that are high caffeine in the elementary schools. So there would only be certain things sold there.
Right.
But in the teacher's lounges, they probably wouldn't need that caffeine.
And we're talking, so you're going to cut the caffeine for the teachers?
Yeah, we're talking, this would be District One.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, and I, I'm sorry, I forgot about them.
And let me back up, too. So again, whether it's Sullivan's or Jesse Radica or whoever, they would, they hopefully will be given an opportunity to submit a proposal if they want?
Only sell other stuff, you say.
But Jesse just bought the paper part, didn't he?
So they'll still have, so they'll still have the opportunity to sell all of snacks, so potato chips, candy bars, that stuff. Those would still.
Oh, those could come from Sullivan's, okay. Yeah, that's true.
So.
Thank you.
We'll go fix the mic. I'll see.
They come any calories you burn, huh?
Any committee reports? If none, we'll go to item eight, Sir Alex, Administrative Business.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Item A is a motion to approve the resolution to accept donations. $2,250 from Essentia Health, the room requirements, 3976 from the Greenhaven PTO for the K2 Track and Field Day, $2,450 from the Owens Family Charitable Foundation for the Hibbing High School of Girls and Boys Golf Team to purchase the simulator and mats, $1,000 from Teresa Mavich to support the room requirements, $1,000 donation from the Owens Family Charitable Foundation to support district mental health, $5,000 from the Arrowhead Manufacturers Association to support the Career Academy, $300 from the Hibbing Soccer Club to support the K2 Track and Field Day, $500 from the Evelyn Elks to support the Hibbing High School Fax Class, and $5,000 donation from the Owens Family Charitable Foundation to support the Hibbing High School Girls and Boys Tennis Team to purchase tennis benches.
So.
Move by Director, and I'm supported by Director LaBardi, any further discussion?
I just think those are really big, nice donations. Even the Evelyn Elks, that's pretty nice to donate to Hibbing.
Cut that one, because we had the fact, with Chisen before.
What?
Evelyn Elks has pretty much taken over the gambling.
Have they? For all the Elks things up here?
For all the Hibbing.
Yeah, I know they're a pretty active club, and, yeah, I don't know about Hibbing, but anyway.
And they paid other donations to projects in Hibbing, too.
That's really nice, and same with all the other donations. It's incredible how many people are willing to give us money. So I just want to thank them very, very, very much.
I know, too, that Terry Anderson was really working hard on that donation for the benches for, at the Lincoln Tennis Course, so I think she says she's been working on that for a couple of years, so it's nice to see that back news.
Good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item B is a motion to approve the fiscal year 24 budget as presented. I had previously sent out an email summarizing it, but happy to take questions. Same with the next item, too, if you just need more time to digest it, reach out to me.
Yeah, so I'm going to, I'll be honest, when I looked at this, the initial one that you sent out, I, I was hoping for additional information to come with this. I feel like it's too vague of categories with a lot of money, not to say that, you know, this is wrong, that they don't look right, but I, I know in order to get these dollars, you have to have done some legwork to, there's a reason why these are the numbers. And I guess I would have preferred to see how you got there, not that we'd have to discuss every little subcategory, but, you know, it's a lot of money and only nine to 10 subcategories. There, there's a lot that goes into there. So to me, it's, it's too vague to approve personally. So again, I just would have liked to see that come along with it, so we could have looked and seen that information on how you got there. But again, not saying that it's wrong or that it looks bad, just my brain needs to see, see how it got to this.
You know, and I think how you feel is really a common feeling amongst board members, because I remember the first years, and even this year, I would love to know how, how you got there. You know, who's sitting down, who's determining the numbers? So I get it, I get what you're saying. However, I put my trust in you, so I don't question it or anything, but I get what you're saying.
The other thing I thought about is, again, I realize there's a process to everything, but to me, it would make more sense to meet with the finance committee to discuss, you know, Mr. Aldrich sent that email, which that was great, I was appreciative of that along with yours, but I feel like it would be great to meet with the finance committee before all this comes, because then again, now we have to approve this, but on the back end, you're coming back to, to talk about that.
Right, but we approved the budget initially, so maybe it would help if we came up, okay, with revision, here's the differences, why it is, we didn't know, something like that, we don't explain.
I mean, I agree, however, like the first year I was on the board, we got a binder, a three-ring binder, and it was every detail in every.
Yeah, not that either.
And it was, it was way, like, way detailed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But maybe that's some excellent nation, maybe.
Explain the differences from what we approved to the revision, maybe.
Well, we have, and we've got two things going on here. We've got the 24 budget, right? And we've got the 23 budget, and the budget has to end up in 23. So we're approving all the revisions, so basically we're on budget at year end, which.
It's a work, it's a guideline, you know, it's, but I, I understand what you're saying. A lot of the, a lot of the determinations are made for us. We know what we're getting from the state. We found that out a couple of weeks ago, we were able to plug that in. Just got our health insurance ready, so we can change all that. We knew they gave 2% away in raises. So I mean, a lot of the items, are they just able to change right there?
So that helps, doesn't it, even to hear that part of it?
To hear it, yeah, but I, I want to see it. I like to see that breakdown, and again, not to have discussion on all of it, but, you know, it's kind of that trust, but verify, or even like how math teacher, the student gets the right answer, but they want to see the work to make sure that they truly, you know, how they got there. And that's, that's where I'm coming from, just to see it. But again, not criticizing the numbers or what is here, it's just, to me, it's too vague without seeing more detailed information.
But would you, would you want the three-ring notebook, though, with all the numbers that we used to get?
Not necessarily every, you know, there could be hundreds.
One more of the summary.
You know, like, for instance, I'm just going to use this as an example, so Garage, that's 50, a little over 55,000. So really, what does that mean? There's, there's a lot that can go into Garage, and I don't want to assume what that means, I want to see what that means, you know, I mean, and that's just how my mind works. So, you know, to me, again, those top categories are just, it's just too vague, because that could mean a whole lot of different things, and what it truly means, I could be thinking of something else. That's all.
Can you prepare something for the next meeting? Would that be, give me a timer, would it be too late for it?
I can do that.
Can you? For 2024?
And I think that the finance committee is going to be meeting and probably getting to that level of detail, because I think the other big piece of it is the enrollment, and what we get for average daily.
Things, things are going to change.
And that's a huge driver of this whole thing.
And said to you what happened is we got 4% increase from the state, but we lost another 50 some students.
He said that. Yeah, if you could do that.
But I, next meeting, I'll put together a summary of how revenue's calculated.
Maybe shoot it out before, then, in case everyone's commenting on it.
Well, and health insurance costs, I think that's something huge. Then prior years, at least recent history, it's been relatively flat.
Yeah.
And now, all of a sudden, it's a large increase.
Yeah, during the early part of the pandemic, people were putting off non-urgent healthcare items, and then after everything, they opened.
What was up?
Everyone started going in, having their procedures and.
So we, we approved the health insurance, right?
Yeah.
A couple of months ago, whenever we approved it.
Bastated, yeah.
Yeah, because you went up for bids.
Yep.
But that was the best we could do, right?
Yeah. Five and a half percent increase, and that couldn't have been worse.
It couldn't have been worse, and we, like Kim said, we haven't had hardly any increase for several.
We actually had a decrease.
And we had a decrease on here, yeah.
Service call.
So, and you might not know this right here, right now, but. So, and you might not know this right here, right now, but at one point in time, and I'm trying to think, was it 2000, early 2000s, when the post-employed benefits changed? So a big piece of it is, you know, obligations we've made under old contracts.
We took more money towards it.
So how far into that are we? You know, or are we almost at the end of that, where we're really feeling those pains?
I, I would say we're not here.
No.
The date was, anyone hired prior to July was 2000. So we still have
Quite a few.
Quite a few people on active staff.
Do we really?
Yeah. I got several friends here that have to work there five or 10 years yet, and they'll call back real quick.
There's an updated seniority list in your box.
Okay.
So there are a lot under Mike that are 104, 7108?
That's a huge liability. So it's like tens of millions of dollars.
Yeah, and it, and it hits us currently, in our current budget, right?
We often pay as we go on that, some years ago.
We can always change it.
The state gave us an opportunity at one point that we could have bonded for it, and we chose not to, and I think we're one of the few that didn't take advantage of that.
That was a one-time shot, and everybody thought it was a good deal, but then, why wouldn't they keep it going? The state cut it off and
So the cost increasing and enrollment decreasing.
And that's the reason. I mean, what did you say? How, how much healthcare cost, 9%?
Uh, just five and a half.
Five and a half. But when you look at, what, $10 million for healthcare per year?
Yeah.
$10 million.
And, you know, as far as the retiree health benefits, we, we do have the authority to let it, and that's a discussion that we want to have with the finance committee about possibly using those dollars in, in a different way that we need right now.
Plus, we have negotiations coming up.
As we'll, like Director McLaughlin said, we're gonna meet in July with the finance committee and come back with some recommendations going forward.
Thanks for all the great work you've done. I know I've argued.
Thank you, guys.
So we want to delay both these?
No, we can't delay anything, we gotta
The 2023?
So if we can, I, I will
Okay, yes, we'll approve them, but why are you gonna give us additional information?
So let me ask this question. This is gonna be our last revision before year end?
On the '23.
On the '23?
Yeah.
We don't, I mean, this is what we expect, we're gonna end up in a
But the '24s could be revised on and on, right?
Yeah, to an extent.
To an extent, to.
And it's, you know, it's a, it's a working guideline, it's a direction.
But the biggest piece of our budget is personnel.
Just off the hand comment, if we work some things out with Chisholm, as we're trying to do, how much of effect is that gonna have on the budget, or will it have enough?
That's a good question, I thought about that company here, that, that could go either way. Might cost us to get something or
Well, if it costs us, then we shouldn't do it.
Then we probably wouldn't do it, but if it's benefitless, then it might save us money, so.
We're, we're in such a preliminary state with this whole process.
Right.
We couldn't have battled it, yes.
Or break you.
And there's potentially some money to set aside by the state, not critical, we have to offset some of those additional costs that are
If it does cost us, yeah.
So these are all things objective, that's the objective, markets are enjoying, it's all so
Also early, I guess, yeah.
And I'm guessing it's gonna depend upon the breadth and depth of what the superintendent's gonna battle with, you know, I mean, like if it's, if it's a larger area, and maybe sharing the cost would, would help both districts?
Well, I mean, I mean, someone mentioned community ed. To me, that sort of makes sense a little bit. I could see us doing something like that. And it'd be really nice if it saved us money.
There was like Tom Oxon, a list for both of us.
Yeah, I missed that meeting with Tom Oxon.
Yeah, so we'll, I think you said, it's so premature right now.
Yeah.
We're just pulling
If it costs us something, we wouldn't do it if we're
Yeah, right.
The whole concept behind this is the number one, it's about the kids, but you also have to look at the cost, not that we're not gonna spend, you know, spend a fortune, like, would be our huge right now.
Speaking of community ed, I noticed that we kind of overspent.
That is intentional. We're investing in our early learning center, spending down the reserve fund balance in hopes that it'll start increasing, or start growing those kindergarten sizes. I think it's fiscal year '25, we'll, we'll actually be getting some EPK funding, so it won't be just general funds kicking back to early learning centers.
Okay. So we'll need a motion to approve
I'll make a motion to approve the '24, do you want a '23?
2024 is first of all.
What's that with the table?
No, we actually do it.
We actually do it. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Director McLaughlin, supported by Director Nyberg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Let the minutes show, one a knee.
I see
It's a motion, or it carries. Go ahead.
I see a motion to approve the revised 2023 budget as presented.
Somewhat.
Support.
Hold by Director Nyberg, supported by Director Polter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I guess I misunderstood, did we do the '23 or '24 first?
The last is '24, this is the revised.
He just went V and C here, yeah, he did, then we just
All right, just so.
We didn't talk about
Thank you.
They're listed backwards.
I could run that one.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Let the minutes show, a knee for that. Motion passes.
I see a motion to approve the agreement between ISD number 701 and Pediatech Nursing for 2023, 2024 school year.
Somewhat.
You made the motion?
I did.
Made by, excuse me, Director McLaughlin, supported by Director Polter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried, thank you.
I made a motion to approve the purchase of services agreement between ISD number 701 and Kai Inter for Intervener Services for the 2023, 2024 school year. Somewhat.
Support.
By Director Polter, supported by Director Egan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried, thank you.
I made a motion to approve the contract with Arrowhead Regional Computing Consortium for specific services from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
Somewhat.
Support.
Hold by Director Nyberg, supported by Director Polter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried, thank you.
I can choose a motion to approve the 2023, 2024 membership renewal for M R E A.
Somewhat.
Support.
Hold by Director McLaughlin, supported by Director Polter. Any discussion?
Do you have a claim with M R E A?
It's sort of
Education Association.
It's similar to MSBA, and they provide us with advice, some lobby, some lobby. Basically, just small communities over there.
Right.
But all for 20, 20 years.
There's a cost involved there.
It's a minimal cost.
$2,500?
I would say we
It's worth it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried, thank you.
I made a motion to approve policy number 712 vending machines.
Somewhat.
Support.
Hold by Director Nyberg, supported by Director Egan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried, thank you. You have nine discussion items, I don't see any. With that, we'll tie it to 10.
Yep. Motion to approve.
No objection, the meeting's adjourned at 4:08 PM.